Mrs. Peak, could you please call us back from closed session?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The council is now reconvened from closed session during which it discussed potential litigation under Government Code Section 5495-6.9 Sub D Sub 2 and Sub E Sub 3. The City Council discussed the matter with counsel, including Special Counsel Allison Burns, and provided unanimous direction to staff. No reportable action was taken. And that concludes a closed session report.
Okay, closed session meeting is adjourned and we will start our regularly scheduled meeting in just a couple of minutes. Welcome, everyone, to the regularly scheduled City Council meeting. If you could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. God, we ask your blessings on those who have been called to lead the community in which we live, work, and play. Guide us peacefully through debate. Remind us that we are not only leaders but first and foremost servants, and that it is our responsibility to serve the common good of all. Grant us the wisdom and the courage to know what is good and do right. May we speak out when it is time to speak out and listen patiently and respectfully when it is time to listen. May we always be guided by the Spirit of Community, by the Spirit of Justice, and by the Spirit of Love. Amen. Okay, Mr. Scollack, could we please have a roll call?
Councilmember LeBlanc.
Present.
Councilmember Musgrove.
Here.
Councilmember Nunez.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Sinella.
Here.
And Mayor Jones.
Here. Okay, we have a Smile Award this evening. Councilmember, I'm sorry, Deputy Mayor, would you like to? Okay.
Well, good evening, everyone. Debbie, can we have you come down for a second? This is a really special evening for me. I've known Debbie for 25 years, at least, maybe more. Well, for those that don't know, we do, each of the council members have a nomination annually for what we call the Smile Award. And the Smile Award is short for San Marcos Inspiration, Leadership, and Excellence. And this award is given out to individuals and organizations that embody the community's spirit of service and dedication each year. And this is my time of the year to give the award, and I couldn't be more happy to give it to Debbie Thompson. Whether Debbie is raising money for youth programs, mentoring the next generation, or helping guide major community nonprofits, Debbie has long been one of San Marcos' go-to leaders. And like I said, Debbie's been doing it a long time, for as long as I can remember. Just a complete dedication to our community and a lot of things San Marcos. Her service to the San Marcos community began in 2001 when she attended a Boys and Girls Club auction 24 years later, 24 auctions later now, right? We just had that not too long ago, a few weeks ago. By the end of the evening, she was asked to help with the following year's auction, and that invitation sparked decades of involvement. Since then, she has played a key role in helping the organization of the Boys and Girls Club grow and mature with expanded programming, professional staff, and many locations. Her impact doesn't stop with just the Boys and Girls Club. Over the past 30 years, Debbie has contributed her time and leadership to the organizations including Rotary, Palomar College, Friends of San Marcos Parks and Rec, and the San Marcos Chamber of Commerce. Much of her work has focused on scholarships, mentorship, and opportunities that empower young people. And in your free time, you happen to manage one of our local banks, which you've been managing for a long time as well, California Bank and Trust, thank you. All those organizations that I mentioned, most people might get involved in one of them. There's like five here. And all of those organizations play such a critical role in our community. It covers the full gamut: youth, education, business, all of it. You've literally touched and worked for organizations that have had such a positive impact on, I'd say, 10,000s, not to exaggerate, but probably realistically hundreds of thousands of residents and people around the North County. So that is just phenomenal. And I hope it's okay to read the next sentence here. "Even after decades of service, Debbie shows no signs of slowing down." Hopefully, it's true. "Continuing to inspire others and strengthen the community she loves." Debbie represents the very best of San Marcos. She doesn't just give her time, she gives her heart. Our community is stronger, kinder, and more connected because of her leadership and generosity. We are truly grateful for all she has done and continues to do for San Marcos.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Well deserved.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Did you want to say a few words or just take a photo?
Oh, you know, one thing that we didn't put in there is, I am involved with Rotary. And one of the things in Rotary is the four-way test. And it's something that I have actually lived by and I feel that my grandkids should be living by. And it's the four-way test of the things we think say or do. Is it the truth? Is it fair to all concerned? Will it build goodwill and better friendships? Will it be beneficial to all concerned? So, in life around the community, I think that's one of the things that we can all live by and make the community even better if everybody just does that. Be nice. So anyways, thank you.
I think we need the flowers for the picture.
Oh. My daughter and my grandkids are here, or two of them.
I think definitely you should bring those down.
Thank you.
How sweet.
All right, come here, come here, we'll take pictures.
Yes.
Come here, real quick. Can we take one with us?
Yes.
Oh, absolutely.
More the mayor.
Thank you. Oops, here, focus away. Thank you.
Thank you.
You don't have to stay for the whole meeting. Oh, you're halfway out the door. Oh, I'm sorry, are we that boring? Ah, geez. Thank you and congratulations. Yeah, I've known Debbie a very long time. It's really good to see her honored like that. All right, moving on to our consent calendar. Are there any items that any council members wish to pull? Seeing none, do I have a motion?
I'll move.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any no's? Seeing none, passes unanimously. Next up, oral communications. I do believe we have some speaker slips. Thank you so much. Okay, first up is C. Chen, followed by Natalie Aguilar, and then Allison Stanton.
Good evening, Mayor Jones and esteemed council members. My name is C. Chen. I am the current president of the Skylark Owners Association, representing our community of 89 homes on Northwest Postus Road. I was here previously, here before you last month, and would like to give you an update on our community. So, work on the city trail running through our Skylark community is progressing at a rapid rate. We want to thank you, our City Council, the members of our city staff, and our developer, Lennar, for those continued efforts. However, we remain very concerned that there has been no significant progress on the 40-acre Skylark Open Space Preserve. The protective fencing installation around Quail Lake that was promised to both the city and our HOA in September was to have been started last month. This has not happened. Promised stopgap measures such as temporary fencing and increased signage also have yet to be initiated. This piece of land remains unprotected and continues to be a safety hazard to the entire San Marcos community surrounding the lake and the open space. That being said, our community is hopeful that Lennar continues to consider public safety a priority and will initiate the promised fencing around Quail Lake immediately. We are thankful that members of our city staff have been able to bring together all stakeholders, including our HOA, Fallbrook Land Conservancy, Lennar, and the City of San Marcos, to enter into a transparent and good-faith discussion this coming Friday. We want to thank you again, Mayor Jones and esteemed City Council members, for continuing to empower our city staff members to facilitate collaborative discussions on protecting and completing the Skylark Open Space Preserve and to transfer it to the able hands at Fallbrook Land Conservancy to be managed appropriately. Thank you very much for your consideration, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Chen. Any questions? Seeing none, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate you. Next up, Natalie Aguilar, followed by Allison Stanton, and then Liz Santos. Hi, Natalie.
Hello. Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. I'm Natalie Aguilar, community educator with Universidad Popular and here to provide our on-the-record updates. First, I would like to share a little bit about how our local community families are doing with the government shutdown. Many low-income families in our community are experiencing deep stress and uncertainty as a result of the government shutdown. For those already living paycheck to paycheck, the disruption in access to essential services and supports, especially food assistance, has created real hardship. People are worried about how they will feed their families, pay their bills, and stay afloat during this time. In this time of need, we continue to maintain our Universidad Popular food pantry, serving community members in our area. We are experiencing increased needs and demand for food, housing, transportation, and other critical needs, especially among elders and agricultural workers. Donations are always welcome at our pantry. Food items of special need include salt, oil, maseca, which is corn flour, beans, and rice. And then last is my regular update on the civics program. We continue to rent the community room on Tuesdays from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. to host civics education classes, and our class continues to grow. Thank you for the partnership with the City of San Marcos, whose collaboration makes our mission of empowering the community through civic engagement possible. Thank you, and I hope you all have a good evening.
Thank you so much, Natalie. I had a quick question of staff. Michelle, I know that we had talked about having a link to the county website and their food resources. Have we, is Universidad Popular on that? Do we know?
I'm not sure that, I don't believe Universidad Popular is on that, but we do on our newsroom on the front page of the website have information and links linking folks to where those resources can be found. And we've educated our information desk staff as well. We've had a couple calls, and our housing group is aware so that we can refer people to the most appropriate resource.
Perfect, thank you so much. And thank you, Natalie, and we do take this very seriously, so we definitely are responding in ways that we can too. So keep fighting the good fight and helping people, really appreciate that. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I do have a follow-up on that because I've been very concerned about the, really, the uncertainty that a lot of our residents are facing. Are we putting out any kind of social media and any kind of announcements about how to navigate some of these resources? Or, not right now, but if we could look at that? Because I think a lot of the fear is the uncertainty around the timeframe in terms of whether or not there's going to be a continued government shutdown and whether or not people are going to have resources. So it is something that I've been very concerned about, and I know a lot of our residents are concerned about, and whether or not they're going to be able to feed their families or have basic necessities. So I would like some sort of update for our residents as to how we're helping to navigate a lot of the uncertainty.
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Nunez. We are going to be sharing some of the county's information, and if we don't have any county information to share, we're going to create a social media post to assist.
And then also one last thing, 211. It's a great resource for all of your needs, and that's something that we are, we've invested in that for as long as I can recall at the city level. So that is something that we participate in, that it's really important for folks to be able to find information, especially in these very uncertain times. So, thank you. Okay, next up, Allison Stanton, followed by Liz Santos. Welcome.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. My name is Allison Stanton, and I live in the Rancho TESORA community where I serve on the Board of Directors for our HOA. I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of our community. Recently, we had a concerning incident and the city maintained open space adjacent to our neighborhood. A truck entered the area after hours, was doing donuts, overturned, and caught fire. Thanks to the incredibly swift action of our first responders, the fire was contained before it could spread, likely preventing what could have been a catastrophic event for our surrounding neighborhoods. Just a few days later, another truck was seen off-roading in the same area during daylight hours. Our residents were able to capture the vehicle's license plate and report it to the Sheriff's Department with the support of Deputy Mayor Mike Sinella. These back-to-back incidents are unfortunately not isolated occurrences. This pattern of behavior has been escalating over the past year and has understandably raised serious concerns among our nearby residents, especially given the dry conditions, wildfire in the area, and proximity to homes. I want to sincerely thank Deputy Mayor Mike Sinella, our District 2 representative, San Marcos Fire, and the Sheriff's Office for their responsiveness and communication. We truly appreciate hearing that city staff plans to evaluate the site this week to look at possible hardening solutions. It's reassuring to see the city take this seriously. We encourage the city to move swiftly once the evaluation is complete, implementing both short-term safeguards such as temporary barricades, signage, or restricted access, and long-term measures like reinforced barriers or design changes that make it impossible for vehicles to enter the open space. Our HOA and neighboring residents are eager to support any interim steps or community education efforts the city recommends. On behalf of our community, thank you again for your partnership, your quick response, and your continued commitment to keeping San Marcos safe.
Thank you, Allison. One thing that I would recommend, and thank you for being our eyes and ears because we obviously can't be everywhere all at the same time. One of the things that I would recommend, and I recommend this for anyone that has issues in their neighborhood, is to, and we have two of our amazing sheriff deputies in the back here, it would be great if you could schedule a neighborhood watch. They'll come out, they're free of charge, they'll actually help you with ways to help your community specifically. And, you know, you can, and it's important for everyone to have each other's phone numbers and whatnot. Sometimes even a Facebook page is very helpful, because if one person sees it and they don't say anything, obviously, that's a problem. So we definitely rely on our residents a lot to help us keep the community safe, and we've always, you know, made sure that we keep those lines of communication open. So if you could maybe schedule that, being that you're on the Homeowners Association, that would be really great. And they're a great resource, too, ways that you can help keep people from coming into the neighborhoods. Unfortunately, we can't stop everyone from bad behavior, obviously. When we put up barriers, that's what they are, they're barriers. But anyway, thank you for your help, and you seemed like you wanted to say something, Deputy Mayor.
I just want to thank you, Allison, for the kind words, especially for our first responders.
Thank you, and I will definitely take your suggestion.
Wonderful, and I'm sure they'll be happy to help you this evening. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next up is Liz Santos. Welcome.
I do have a one-page handout for you. Is that okay?
Okay, you could just give that to the city clerk and they will distribute it. Thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Jones and City Council members. My name is Liz Santos. I speak for my 81-year-old mother to report discriminatory actions against her property and the city staff's failure to resolve an ongoing civil liability matter impacting California and federal laws. My 81-year-old mother is being pushed off her property by powerful interest, and she deserves immediate protection and justice. The city staff has presented confusion. In one moment, they acknowledged the oversight in the approved grading plan GP 20-0007, directing the contractor to make corrections and stating to use our real estate per our grant deed while gates are open. In the same strike, the city staff is unwilling to revise plans leaving our family exposed. As a result, we have suffered two violent altercations, one nearly life-ending. Mayor Jones, we look to you, we look to your leadership and consistency, having previously stated that changes affecting private property require written consent, impact owners as directed per common law. Those conditions on any entitlement impose fiduciary responsibilities by city staff, and anything short violated public policy. The proposed work under TPM 19001 and current issues with the city staff have directly contributed to ongoing confrontations. This is not about holding out for money, but my mother owning her place, piece of land, and being able to do what she wants with it as it is her right. To be specific, private property rights cannot be altered without written consent as required by the California Subdivision Map Act and the conditions of TPM 19001. No such consent was obtained. The city ordered corrections to relocate fencing and adjust grading GP 20007, but those connections remain incomplete. Permanent fencing still blocks our easement, and grading changes restrict access. Safety has been compromised. On September 24th, 2025, the construction debris shattered our vehicle's rear window, narrowing missing my mother. On October 31st, 2025, unauthorized work and aggressive behavior from the developer crew left our family feeling endangered. These incidents implicate the city's duty under CCR Title 16475 and Business Profession Code Section 6775 to protect public safety and property rights. Our requests are simple and urgent, please provide documentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
And have a good evening.
Mrs. Peak, I assume that your office is going to be handling this?
The city staff has already responded to Ms. Santos, and Special Counsel is also addressing it.
Okay, okay, all right. So we've got people on it, so they will be responding.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, next up, ordinances. Item number 11, ordinance number 2025-1569 and 2025-1570, amending San Marcos Municipal Code Chapter 17.64 to adopt the 2025 California Fire Code and declaring local conditions to amend certain provisions of the same, and ordinance adopting the 2025 California Wildland Urban Interface Code and the 2024 International Wildland Urban Interface Code and declaring local conditions to amend certain provisions of the same to be the San Marcos Fire Protection District Wildland Urban Interface Code. And there he is, our fire marshal. So I got all of the heavy lifting out of the way, so you could just give your presentation.
Wonderful. We have our division chief, Naylin, with us this evening, and he's going to go through the high points on this.
There it is. Good evening, Mayor Jones and council. So this is the triennial fire code and WUIC code adoption. Every three years, the state of California adopts a new fire code, and these are our local amendments that are specific to San Marcos and the fire district.
And this is to align us with the state codes and the county codes that are passed down to us, so we're just bringing our code up to current conditions, I guess.
Correct, yes, we're making this San Marcos-specific.
Okay.
There hasn't been many changes since last code, and we also are adopting the San Diego County WUIC code with San Marcos amendments.
Okay, and these are the introductions. Are there any discussions from council? Nope? Seeing none? Do I have a motion to adopt?
I'll move to adopt.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any no's? Seeing none? You're done, that was pretty quick.
Thank you.
Good for you, that's the first time I think it was that quick. All right, moving on to our public hearings. Ordinance number 2025-1568, amending Title 20 of the San Marcos Municipal Code to comprehensively update the zoning ordinance/Title 20 of the San Marcos Municipal Code and finding that said amendment is exempt from review under the California Environmental Quality Act. And here we are. Okay, Mr. Faraci.
Yeah, good evening, Mayor Jones, council members. Sarah Clough, our senior planner, is the project manager for this, will be providing a presentation for council tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Faraci and Mayor Jones.
Oop, I don't think your microphone's on.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor Jones, thank you, Mr. Faraci. All right. Our item tonight proposes updates to Title 20 of the San Marcos Municipal Code, the zoning ordinance. Before you now is the Planning Division's request for approval of a text amendment for the first phase of a comprehensive update to the zoning ordinance and adoption of a sequoia exemption for the project. The zoning ordinance is a citywide regulating document that regulates built form and use of all property in the city to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the residents of the city. All development projects that occur in the city are evaluated for conformance with the general plan and also with the development standards in the zoning ordinance. Over time, as the zoning ordinance has been implemented by city staff, various inconsistencies, conflicting information, and discrepancies with state law have been identified, highlighting the need for updates. Since last year, staff has been working on a comprehensive revision to the entire Title 20, collaborating with various city departments to identify necessary changes. Given the scope of Title 20, updates will be presented to City Council for approval in phases. Tonight, we are presenting those amendments proposed under the first phase of the comprehensive zoning ordinance update. The amendments in the Establishment of Zones chapter include corrections and revisions to be consistent with the general plan, including clarification of the allowed number of dwelling units per acre and updating titles of land use classifications. Updates to the Land Use and Development Approval chapter include adding a temporary event permit as a type of permit to allow for temporary events and uses, such as Christmas tree lots. The amendments to the Agricultural Zone chapter include clarifications and corrections to the permitted uses table, such as added references to other code sections to provide clarifying definitions or specific land use requirements described elsewhere in the zoning ordinance, ensuring land uses and use permit requirements are similar to other residential zones in the city and are in compliance with the state law. Outdoor lighting in this zone will be updated to provide permit requirements and standards for non-residential uses, such as sports courts and horse arenas. Additional cross-references to other sections in the code Additional cross-references to other sections in the code are added to further clarify how standards are identified. The updates to the Residential Zones chapter include consistency and provision of dwelling units, dwelling unit density across all residential zones, and clarification of zone definitions. Clarifications and corrections to the permitted uses table are proposed, such as added references to other code sections for clarification, and ensuring land uses and use permit requirements are in compliance with the state law. Figures will be updated for clarity and consistency, and one new figure will be added to represent our two-zone setback standards, which had previously been omitted. Multi-family amenities requirements and design standards are updated to further clarify the intent of regulations and for ease of use. Updates to the Commercial Zone chapter include organizational corrections to the permitted uses table, as well as addition of references to other chapters in Title 20, and ensuring that land uses and use permit requirements are in compliance with the state law. The amendment clarifies office floor area allowances for commercial land uses and updates allowances of business activities permitted outside of enclosed buildings to now clearly identify automobile rentals and plant nurseries. Updates to the Mixed Use Zone chapters include minor corrections and reorganization of an updated uses in the permitted uses table to be more consistent with other commercial zones in the city. Land uses, similar to those already permitted, have been added to be in greater alignment with commercial zone permitted uses, allowing more flexibility to developers to obtain and keep businesses. Updates to the Industrial Zones chapter include the addition of references to other chapters of Title 20 and an increase in ancillary retail sales from 10% to 20%, based upon staff's experience working with industrial property users in the city, and confirmation of alignment with neighboring jurisdictions' ordinances, for examples of retail floor area. Updates to the Public Institutional and Open Space Zones chapter include correction of the chapter's title to also reference the open space zone, minor corrections, and removing the incorrect use permit requirements. Since the voters approved addition of this ordinance in 2006, zoning code updates to Chapter 20-260, the Ridgeline Protection and Management Overlay Zone. Over the years included minor edits and reorganization. This update returns language and organization to that in the original voter-approved ballot measure. The amendments to the Inclusionary Housing chapter include clarification that the inclusionary housing in-lu fee shall apply to, and the fee shall be calculated based on the total number of housing units to be built. This update makes application consistent with the fee adopted in, by the city council in November of 2024, based upon the Inclusionary Housing in-lu fee study. Also, the in-lu fee will be applied to the total number of housing units prior to any increase in the allowable number of units authorized by any density bonus. Since voters approved addition of this ordinance in 1998, zoning code updates to Chapter 2315, the Residential Growth Management Zone. Over the years included minor edits and reorganization. This update returns language and organization to that in the original voter-approved ballot measure. The Specific Use Standards Chapter, Section 2040160, Places of Assembly, will be updated to add objective standards for approval of a conditional use permit for places of assembly to be consistent with recent case law. Within agricultural and residential zones, new objective standards now include hours of operation, parking standards to minimize impacts to surrounding properties, and capacity of assembly being based upon the size of the property, intensity of surrounding development, and capacity of streets serving the facility. The Site Development Plan Review Chapter will be updated to extend the lapse of time an approved site development plan from one to two years, based upon staff's experience working with the developers and property owners, which have identified one year as too short of a time to pull the permits for the construction of projects after approval of entitlements. This amendment will remove the need to process unnecessary permit extensions for site development plans. The Conditional Use Permits chapter will be updated to state that conditional use permits must be approved or denied based upon objective evidence. This update is needed to make this section consistent with recent case law. The proposed updates to Title 20 have been reviewed by staff for compliance with the California Environmental Quality Act, or SEQA. Staff recommends a finding of no physical effect and/or an exemption under SEQA, as the proposed text amendment is not a project within the meaning of Section 15378 of the SEQA guidelines, because there is no potential for it to result in a physical change in the environment, either directly or indirectly. Additionally, if the proposed text amendment was considered to be a project under SEQA, pardon me, subject to SEQA, it would be exempt pursuant to Section 15061B3 of the SEQA guidelines, because it can be seen with certainty that there is no possibility that it would have a significant effect on the environment. Accordingly, staff recommends adoption of Notice of Exemption, EX25030. The city conducted a noticed public workshop held on April 30th, 2025, to present changes to 13 of the municipal code chapters before you today. The city conducted a subsequent noticed workshop held on September 4th, 2025, to present changes to the San Marcos Municipal Code Chapter 2310 for inclusion in this text amendment. Planning Commission conducted public hearing on October 6th, 2025. No further public comments were received at the Planning Commission meeting. The Planning Commission recommended approval by a seven-to-zero vote. Based upon the facts and findings provided in the project staff report and project conditions, staff recommends adoption of SEQA exemption, EX25-030, and approval of ordinance number 2025-1568 for the first phase of the comprehensive zoning ordinance update. This concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you so much. Okay, so basically, we're introducing this this evening so that we align with all of the state laws and clear up some of the verbiage. I just, I did want to speak to the Chapter 20.260, which is our Ridgeline Protection and Management Overlay Zone. I know it does say in here that its updated language should be consistent with voter-approved initiative, but I feel that I must say, we're not making any changes, we can't do that. It was voted on by the residents of San Marcos, that we want to protect the ridgelines because they're very special, they're part of our community that I think kind of sets us apart from other cities, and that we're not making any changes to it. And if we were to try to make a change, it would have to go to a vote of the people. So I just want to clarify that, and that it's just updating the footnotes as well, and that's it. Just wanted to make sure everyone was aware of that. Any other discussion? Yes, Councilmember Musgrove.
Thank you, Mayor. Excuse me. With the ever-changing final product of SB 79, and given that the public hearings were conducted earlier this year, are we still within compliance? And do we still reserve our authorities as a charter city in the event that we need to use that? I know we have to be within compliance, but when it comes to the residential ordinances, very sensitive as to what we're giving up to remain in compliance.
We're not changing anything substantial in terms of the residential zone. In terms of SB 79, we would need to comply with the requirements of state law, if and when someone wants to apply SB 79.
So this framework allows us to do that? Within the ordinance, with the revised ordinance?
It does, I mean, it, it's basically clarification to the residential zones, it doesn't, it's not making any substantive changes.
Okay, thank you.
Additionally, if I could note, the city's charter was amended to provide that the city will follow state law with respect to planning and zoning matters, which was a sad day for me, but yes, the city is required to follow state law on planning and zoning matters, so these changes are consistent with that.
Right, and whether we updated this or we didn't, we still have to follow SB 79, one of the most terrible laws. Well, honestly, I don't know, there's, there's been over 70 of them in the last, I'm sorry, 170 of them in the last two years, so it's terrible. Anyway, yes, we have to follow those laws. Deputy Mayor, did you? No? Any other? Okay, all right, well then, I make a motion that we introduce this. This is the first reading, and that is, I already read the whole title, I think, so I don't think I have to read it a second time. Sorry, Mrs. Peak, I already read the full title.
Yeah, we were just wondering if we could close a public hearing.
Oh, sorry.
Close the hearing.
Okay. Sorry, I forgot it was a public hearing.
I'll second the motion.
All right, motion and a second, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Okay, so my motion is to introduce the, and I already read the full title, but it's ordinance 2025-1568. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, motion and a second, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any no's? Seeing none? Okay, moving on to item number 13, which is also a public hearing. Ordinance number 2025-1571, this is the second extension of an interim agency, I'm sorry, urgency ordinance of the city council of the city of San Marcos, California, imposing a temporary citywide moratorium on the conversion slash change of any mobile home park existing in the city from a park occupied primarily or exclusively by residents age 55 years or older, to be a mobile home park allowing residents of all ages to take effective immediately. So the recommendation is to adopt, and there is no second reading that's required, because this is an extension. The ordinance extending for a second time the interim urgency ordinance imposing a temporary citywide moratorium of the conversion slash change of said mobile home parks occupied by primarily people that are 55 or older, like me, and to a mobile home park allowing residents of all ages. And that is pursuant to, for a period of one year pursuant to California Government Code Section 65858A. And do we have any discussion on this? Being this is an extension?
It's an extension, I'm happy to give a brief staff report if you need one, but it's, you've been there and done that.
Been there, done that, yes.
You've seen it before, this is the second extension. There is, it is the final extension that is permitted, it's for one year. We are hoping that in the interim, there may be some case law that comes, gets finalized that will provide some direction in terms of what can and cannot be done. And then staff has also, as outlined in the staff report, performed some additional research and evaluation of the possibility of proposed amendments, the scope and nature of the changes to be proposed have been discussed and are undergoing additional evaluation. So in addition to the, all of those issues, we're also looking at whether any SEQA review is going to be required for the adoption of a proposed zoning ordinance. And we did include, as required, the public report pursuant to Government Code Section 65858, and we do recommend adoption of the interim ordinance extension.
Okay, thank you for the clarification, Mrs. Peak. This, this is something I definitely think is very important, this is the second extension, and we will be seeing this again. Is there any further discussion by the council? And we, it is a public hearing, so we do need to close the public hearing. Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Move to approve.
We don't have any speakers, by the way. And by the way, on the previous items, we didn't have any public speakers, which is why I didn't announce it. Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Okay, public hearing is closed. Do we have a motion or further discussion on this item?
Move to approve. Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, all in favor? Aye? Any no's? Seeing none? Motion passes unanimously. Okay, moving on to new business. This is the city council policy 2025-14, policy for the council recognition of our Smile Award program, which we had earlier this evening. I believe we have a short, sorry, going so fast, we have a short discussion on this.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Our Director of Lean Government, Christina Ray, is going to provide us with a very brief presentation. Good evening. Wow, okay. Excellent tech support from our city clerk. Yes, so this evening, we are going to talk about the Smile Award. Just as some brief background, the city council established this award in 2021, and it's really meant to recognize some of the maybe lesser-known or unsung people who really exemplify that spirit of service that makes San Marcos so special. You named it the Smile Award, which stands for San Marcos Inspiration, Leadership, and Excellence. And the way it's worked since then is it rotates among the council members, where each council member has an opportunity once a year to give the recognition. Here you can see some of the materials associated with the award, the person being recognized, it's a certificate, we put them on the website, and we also send out a news release. And so, under the municipal code, the mayor or any two council members can request that an item be brought forward for the city council's consideration. And so this evening, we are proposing a policy. When the city council voted for the Smile Award back in 2021, it was through a minute motion, so it was less formal. And so what we're proposing is it be a city council policy, and the goal was to clarify that it is meant to be unifying and not at all considered political. And so here are some of the provisions that we are recommending be in the policy, that it not be awarded to existing or former elected officials or candidates for office, or other individuals or groups that would otherwise be considered political. We also added a provision that the awardee does not need to be a resident of San Marcos, just that their contributions would have benefited the San Marcos community. And then in terms of the process, we're recommending that the city council member who is honoring the individual be the one to prepare a short write-up and a photo, and then city staff will take that and use it for the news release and the website and the other promotional materials. And that concludes our short presentation.
Thank you so much, Tina. You know, I actually really am glad that we're creating an actual policy on this, because the Smile Award, I think, I think has gotten off track a little bit, and that is because it should not be used for political purposes, it should not be people that are running for office, it is not, and I like the, the actual criteria. This is, this is really the unsung heroes of our community, and I think, you know, our recipient this evening could not have been a more ideal person to celebrate, someone that has never held office, someone that remains in the background, but does a lot of hard work for the community, bringing people together, serving with no recognition actually needed or wanted, but it's a way for us to actually celebrate their, and like Debbie Thompson this evening. But having that, no one that's running it for office, no officers or employees of political parties, you know, the beautiful thing about our city, and the reason that we get so much done in our city, is we stay on focus of serving our residents without politics of it. You know, a lot of people say to me, Mayor, why, why is it that San Marcos is doing so well and is so unified, and people care for one another? And that is because it's not about party, it's not about politics, it's about the people, and it always has been. And that is something, you know, that we've had from well before I got here, 20 years ago, well, I guess I'm, I guess I'm kind of dating myself, because I've actually known Debbie Thompson as long as I've actually been in the city, back in the city, anyway, raising my kids. But I moved back in 2000, and I, you know, there are a lot of people that we have to recognize that have done so many great things, recognizing people that are running for office or in office or were in office. That's not what the, the spirit of the Smile Award is to me. And so I'm glad that we're actually talking about this in public and discussing what all of us want. So I'm just one, but I'd like to hear what the rest of us really feel about this. Yes, Councilmember Musgrove?
Thank you, Mayor. It's really interesting, and I agree, this, we have strayed.
Thank you, Mayor. It's really interesting, and I agree this, we have strayed. And we need to get it back on track, and I will cite three particular individuals who I think exemplify why we brought this forward. I'll start out with Rick Rongaitis, who heads our Chamber of Commerce, who spends incredible amount of time benefiting our business community, which benefits our community at large. Staravera Lacy, who we will be losing her. She's the president of Palomar College. She's going up to Riverside. Has done fantastic work facilitating educational programs and working with Cal State San Marcos to ease that transition for community college students to move on to a four-year university. And an hour ago, 45 minutes ago, Debbie Thompson. She gives her life to this city and doesn't live in the city. So this is a particular case where you can look at it and say, this person doesn't live here but has contributed greatly to our community, and I think that's a fantastic example. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor?
Yeah, I, I agree with both of you, and I'm not going to repeat everything that you just said. And for me, it's, it's really simple. This, this award is such a special part of our community and just a great way to recognize people that are deserving. But it never, ever was intended, at least my understanding, to recognize ourselves either currently or after we're out of office. I, I just don't, I don't agree with that. And I'm glad that we're taking some specific action to, to prevent that from happening again.
Okay, thanks. Yes, Councilmember LeBlanc?
So I'm definitely generally in support of this policy because I agree with you. I think the Smile Award should be for stars in our community and not to recognize ourselves. But I'm gonna pull a lawyer here because of my background, and I just think the wording is a little too vague. I think that the portion that says it's not intended to recognize is a little too vague. I'd like to see that tightened up because it still technically leaves the door open.
How about shall not? Shall not recognize?
Yes, I feel like it should be definitive and not vague.
Okay, I'm, I'm good with that.
Can I, can I chime in on that? I, I think if we close that door completely, we close it indefinitely. So we may have, as an example, Pia Harris, she would have been precluded from this, and she was certainly deserving of it. So I think if we just leave that there and we trust it, we will do the right thing as we move forward. I think that's a better way to resolve this and as written. Thank you.
I still think we should change the wording and make it more definitive. I like shall not, but we could also maybe elaborate on it a little bit. I don't know if we could say something about, I don't know, a timeframe. I'm not sure how we would word that. But something so that it's not, you know, let's say somebody, you know, like Pia was great. Somebody goes on to do something, you know, becomes like president or something. I don't know. I mean, let's just set our sights high. But if something like that were to happen, we don't want to say, oh, well, we can't give them the Smile Award because we have this policy. So I don't know if there's a way to elaborate on it, put something else in there.
I, I don't know. Honestly, I, you know how much I love Pia Harris Seibert. However, I do, I mean, I, I just feel like this is not what the spirit of the Smile Award is about. The Smile Award is to recognize folks that weren't in office because they're doing, they're, they're doing it for a reason of they just want to give back, you know? And I was an activist before I was on the City Council. Like, I wanted to give back. I, I, I've been involved with the Boys and Girls Club for a very long time. But I also don't feel that I want to be eligible for this. And so for that reason, I, I don't know. I, I like shall not. I recognize candidates for public office, officers of employees. And then make it that, or the election or appointment of public officials. I just feel like the spirit of it is our unsung heroes. The spirit of it is the spirit of service of our community. That is what makes San Marcos, San Marcos. And I feel like it would take us off, and no disrespect, Councilmember Musgrove. I just feel like I want to make it so that no elected official could get it. Because that's not what it's for.
And I, I'd agree with that. This is a city council given award, and we should not be giving it to ourselves. There's so many people that are.
People that we worked for.
Yeah, there's so many people in our community that are worthy to be recognized. And this is our way to say thank you and recognize them in public and just show that, that, you know, we're just so grateful for everything that they do for our community. It should have nothing ever to do with us because we're the ones giving the award. And so even when we leave office, we should still not, not receive this, this particular award. And so I, I do agree with the shall not.
Okay. Shall not? Is that, does that appease you, Councilmember LeBlanc?
Yes, I like the shall not, and I just wanted to add that I do think we want everyone in our community to feel like they have the opportunity to maybe be nominated for this award at some point. It's something to aspire to, to know that we recognize you in the community for giving back and for wanting to be a positive light in our community.
Okay. Councilmember Nunez, did you have any comments?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I'm generally in support of the, of the policy that's in front of us. I'm in support of the, of the Smile Award. I do think there's a lot of vagueness in the process and in the selection. So considering the shall, for me, doesn't take care of a lot of the vagueness. But in general, I'm in support of the, of the policy.
All right, so did you want to let us know what you're, that you find vague, so maybe we could clear it up?
For me, this is a great start. Ultimately, I think, as I understand, we're gonna maintain. This is our own individual nomination. It doesn't require a vote. I don't see any of that. So in terms of how we each individual come to a decision, that doesn't seem to be addressed here. So I'm generally in favor of what's in front of us.
So, so this is.
And what's being proposed.
So the action this evening is to consider adopting a policy to clarify the Smile Award program. So are you, if we make a motion and we move forward, it would be to consider adopting this? Would you be, do we need to clear anything up to make you more comfortable with it?
For me, actually, the shall kind of creates a lot more procedural potential, I think, conflicts and uncertainty. So for me, that doesn't address. But like I said, I'm, I'm inclined to approve this as it stands.
Oh, okay. All right. I just wanted to make sure we couldn't do anything to, maybe we could get you to feel really comfortable with it. But I guess you're, you're good with it?
I would still approve. For me, it just creates more, more of a potential procedural conflict.
Okay, all right, well.
I, I, I would be inclined to vote for the language as it's proposed.
Okay, all right. With the, this word is shall not, this word shall not instead of is not intended to. With that.
Mayor, can I make a substitute motion then?
She didn't make a motion yet.
Oh, I thought she made the motion to adopt with the wording.
No, I, I don't.
I did not. My, my comment is that I'm inclined to, to vote in favor of the language as it's, as is. With that, the shall changes. For me, the shall creates potential problems for this body and for city staff.
Okay. Councilmember, did you have a motion?
That we adopt the policy with the, the change to reflect shall, as opposed to the original verbiage.
Well, it's actually, I think, shall, yeah, shall not.
Correct.
Yeah, okay. So with shall not.
Opposed to intended.
Okay, yes, perfect. Okay, so shall not is the change. And city staff and Mrs. Peak can make those changes, so you have a motion. I'll second that. Let's vote. All in favor? Aye. Any noes?
No.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Councilmember. You took me by surprise. Didn't you just say that you're inclined to? Sorry, I, I was trying to figure out if we could have a unanimous vote.
For me, the shall creates more potential conflicts.
Okay, all right, I was confused. I'm sorry. I thought you said you were voting with us. Okay, all right. That would be for one, would be the vote. So, moving on to oral communications, no more speakers. And then reports. Sandeg, Councilmember Musgrove, you attended in my stead.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Time me, please. We discussed policy updates, which you will be seeing at your next meeting. They cover compensation for virtual meetings, and there was a, a staff recommendation that those who attend virtually receive compensation. And there was quite a bit of pushback on that. And it, the essence of it was presented by one of our mayors who said, if you can't get up to come to a meeting, you're not going to be compensated. So that, you'll be revisiting that one.
Well, okay, I, I do have a question. Is that, if you attend and you're sick, because I'd prefer someone, if they're sick, I'd prefer them not to come and cough on me.
So, okay, since you're asking, so then it said, as long as you're otherwise in compliance with the legal requirements for the Brown Act. But then the question was brought up, so all I have to do is say, I have a runny nose and I can stay home. So, so this is why it needs to be addressed.
Well, we should be adults, right?
We should.
Responsible adults, I guess.
We discussed the responsibilities of the several PACs, the Policy Advisory Committees, of which I chair one, that they want regular reports back to the board, so that'll be something you'll revisit. Sponsored events, and they, they specifically use the bike anywhere, but not that there's an issue with that. But they want to make sure that we are being, and I say we, Sandeg, are being very judicious in which events they sponsor because we're using public funds and where we put our branding. So that's, I think, a great idea. And then to ensure that we do not fall out of compliance for potential FRA, Federal Rail Authority grants and other funds that might come in. Being very cognizant of the wording in all of our documentation so that we do not run afoul of the current administration. And they use the example of DEI in some of our documentation. So that will have to be reviewed and amended as necessary.
I think our Director of Internal Controls would be probably on that.
They are, in fact, thank you.
Okay, perfect.
And then the roles of council, general and board, and they also to allow the CEO to settle claims up to $50,000. And then the update to the debt policy and the toll policy, such as naming. So right now, we refer to the State Route 125 as a South Bay Expressway. Just, it's a toll road. They just want to call it a toll road, which is what it is. And the, and I use the word infamous, my wording. The infamous back office system project for the toll roads are in the fiscal year '26 budgets. That's three years now we'll be dealing with that. Costs some jobs, costs a lot of money. Let's see, so this goes into other issues now. The I-15 SR-78, and I only, I'm bringing two issues up because it affects all of us here. The I-15 SR-78 HOV connector. And if you don't know, that there is a plan to put in a flyover express lane from Barham all the way to Interstate 15 and then reverse, so you can avoid that whole logjam right there. Let's see, the design phase is in the FY '26 budget. However, the $60 to $70 million are not yet identified or appropriated. But what is currently in the FY '26 budget are the estimated $38 to $43 million for the environmental studies. And it's anticipated that in the FY '27 budget will contain the line item to start the construction phase for the Barham SR-78 HOV interchange. And I asked this question for clarification, and it went to Antoinette, who then checked with Caltrans. So they wrote back to me an email, that the realignment of Barham, and I know, Mayor, you're well aware of that. The realignment of Barham to, and if, if you would please, when I'm finished, express the details to the, to the community. The realignment of Barham to a more conventional interchange with the SR-78 is part of the project but not part of Phase 1 because it involves rights of way of property acquisitions, which is a nice way to put what they're really gonna do. They need to be hammered out before the surface street alignments take place, and that is the end of my report.
And the widening of the bridge, because that's actually the biggest part of it. And as you go under woodland, there's a problem there. Obviously, we all know, that's actually why it doesn't flow very well over there. So, and we were the only city that was actually collecting money for the 78, for the improvements, for that Barham interchange. So I'm not sure where we're at financially on that. I haven't gotten an update on that recently. And maybe I'm actually going to have a meeting with Mario on Wednesday. Mario Orso, our new director. I will bring that up to him because, yeah, it needs to happen.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to League of, sorry, then I remembered, wait, we don't have League of California Cities, so I'm skipping that one.
Well, actually, Mayor, just to clarify, at the last council meeting, I said we would be meeting in November, and then realized we do not have a November meeting, so we will meet in December. Is that correct?
December, yes, okay. I, I saw that, and I was like, oh, shoot, wait. I remember you telling me, okay. So North County Transit District, WMA?
Yes, we meet next week.
Next week, okay. North County Dispatch?
We meet in December.
December. Clean Energy Alliance, Councilmember Nunez?
Thank you, Mayor. We did meet this past October 30th. It was a pretty tough meeting. We began discussions about our projections for the projected rates. And the forecast so far looks pretty grim for our residents. So I think we're gonna have some tough discussions. It's still preliminary. We're waiting for the CPUC to make some decisions. We should be seeing some updates, hopefully with, before the end of the year. So I'm thinking, once we have a better idea of what the projected numbers will look like, I'm hoping that RCA, from the Clean Energy Alliance, Greg Wade, will come and do an update for the entire council and for the residents. So I'll certainly work with staff to, to make sure we coordinate that. We are meeting this coming at the end of November, November the 20th. And then we'll be dark in December for the year.
Okay.
I do want to announce that we do have an application period that's open for our citizens advisory representatives. We have two individuals that currently serve. And so their term ends at the end of the year. So we are accepting applications for any of our residents who are interested in serving in an advisory capacity.
Same as our city commissions?
Yes.
Yes, okay. We, we declared the vacancies earlier in our consent calendar. Okay. All right, thank you, Councilmember. Moving on to City Council Business Visits. I see the picture here of Councilmember LeBlanc and Councilmember Musgrove in the rocks. We got a lot of rocks out there in Twin Oaks Valley KRC.
Lots of rocks.
Lots of rocks.
Lots of rocks.
Yes.
Giant rocks.
Everywhere. 1984.
So they have been around since 1984, and they provide hardscape to residents. They deal with a lot of contractors. They source from around the world. They are open to the public. They wanted to make sure that everybody knows that because you can walk in, see their beautiful rocks. They have some amazing fire pits. They do pool tiling. They do a little bit of everything, basically anything you need for your yard, they will have. They do turf, and they do a lot of commercial projects, but they also do residential as well. So they're basically your one-stop shop for all of your hardscape and artificial turf needs. And just really great people. They have, I think it was six employees that have been with them for over 30 years. They are looking to grow a little bit, and they have a great space out off of Twin Oaks Valley Road. But they, you know, they're always looking for more space because they are growing, they're thriving. Councilmember Musgrove, do you want to add anything?
You took just about all of it there.
Sorry.
That's a great job, though.
She was on a roll.
Better than I would have done. I, I would just add that they have an operation in Alcohona and in Poway. Is that correct?
Yes.
So with respect to looking for more room, it's not to leave San Marcos, that they're committed to staying here.
Correct.
They would just like a little more area. And they are very, when I use, don't want to use the word sensitive, they're very sensitive to the fact that the neighbors will hear noise all the time. Some of them are commercial, but just to the south, you'll hear, it's residential, so they will hear the, the multi-ton rocks sometimes being moved around. We watched a loader moving some rocks around to get the right size to put into a truck. And they do a very good job of not dropping things. They set them down as quietly as possible. They're very, very considerate of their neighbors. And they, when they do have a big project, they will let all the neighbors know what's going on because they have been there for quite a while. They want to stay there. Tim Joss is the, is the owner. He bought the business quite a few years ago. And it was, it was really interesting to walk in. I've been in there before. And just to reiterate that, while it looks like it's an industrial operation, they have a showroom. We were there, they were laying out tiles so that if you were gonna put some stonework in your yard for a footpath, they had that all set up. They have a really nice artificial little fountain with a creek in it so that you can get an idea. And they have planners there that will come out to your property and help you out. And again, they, they source stonework from all. And again, they source stonework from all around the world, bring it in. Very nice. They do not go to construction sites and buy product from them. They buy quality granite primarily for a lot of their work. Very nice.
Yeah, they had a really caring sales team. Tim was really amazing. He was, he's really engaged with the community and really passionate about what he does. And just the one thing they do not do is installation. They do not install. So, you just have to make sure you cover that side of it, and they basically have everything else you need.
I have some rock in my backyard that my landscapers went and got. So, when I was having, yes, of course. They're like, "Well, we'll actually save a little bit of time because we're gonna get the rock right at KRC." I have very low-maintenance backyard. I have only hardscape, fake grass, and river rock. That's it.
That's the way to go.
Dee plants, but nothing major.
I do not have a green thumb, so that's kind of how my yard looks, too. Lots of succulents and lots of hardscape.
Anyway, they do a great job.
Yes, they really do. It's incredible.
Okay, council commentary tomorrow, Veterans Day. Be at Hellenberger Park if you'd like to celebrate our veterans. That is right there at the corner of Rock Springs and Woodland. It's a little park. It's beautiful. It starts at 11, but folks need to be there a little bit early. There's not a heck of a lot of parking, so we generally park across the way at the church. Plenty of parking over there, and they're so gracious. They open up the parking lot for us. So, anyway, and the racets will start right at 11 o'clock.
Mayor?
So, yes.
You said Rock Springs.
Did I? Did I say Rock Springs? Borden. On the other side, it's Rock Springs. Yeah, sorry. Okay. Any other discussion? Aw, look at that.
Thank you, Mayor.
There's letters for us.
On Friday, I was invited to High Tech Middle to be a guest speaker for Ms. Wagner's 7th grade class, periods 1 and 2, so I spent two hours with them. And these students were just phenomenal, and they asked so many questions. And they were so curious about local government and the future of San Marcos and where we're going. And they asked great questions, even about building amusement parks in the city, which, of course, we're not gonna do. But it would be nice, but we're kind of, you know-
Well, don't break their hearts.
I know. We don't have the land, but it was really great. And they wrote all of us letters, and I told them that I would bring these tonight, and I would give them to everybody. So, Ed, here's your package of letters.
That's my favorite.
Here's a package for Councilwoman Nunez.
Nunez, yes. How sweet is that?
And a package for Councilwoman LeBlanc.
Councilwoman LeBlanc.
And a package for Mayor Rebecca Jones, yes.
Thank you.
It was a lot of fun.
Love that. Well, we're gonna have to read these. So, I actually love to keep these, so when I'm feeling like someone's angry, I go to one of these. They always make me feel better. All right, with that, any other commentary? Nope. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.